Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call me in order. Sheriff?
Reported collections year-to-date, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, eighty-four cents. Housing out of County inmates, DOC, year-to-date, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifty cents. And then I sent out an email to how to sell. It's something I have to do about every ten years, it seems. This will be the third time that we've done it since I've been there. And I sent the cheapest quote we could get, and that's if we stripped ourselves, they'll save us around three thousand dollars. And it was twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars minus stripping ourselves is minus twenty-seven thirty-seven. And it ranged from that price to fifty-eight thousand dollars. So it's very expensive.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys got the pictures, but I have pictures with me.
Yeah, we got them.
Vinyl-covered foam, basically.
I think so. I'm not.
Is that part of the problem? They tear it up when they're in the yard?
A lot of it, a lot of it.
You're proposing, and obviously we have an additional request in this meeting to pay for this out of your misdemeanor fund.
Yes. Well, we appreciate that certainly. Quite the expense, but there's not any choice but to do it, is there?
No. At least we'll be good for another ten to twelve years.
That might see you out this round then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. We're fine with it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Potter?
Just, we are almost done with our assessment. All we have left is some commercial in Rockville, and we will be done for the cycle for the shares. All's going well.
Good. Tax collector, I dropped my money on, my donation to you.
I know. Henry said you were in a suit.
Were you checking and watching me out the window?
He goes to bed. I thought, oh, is he coming to see us? Wow.
I just dumped it in the box and made my escape.
Well, we haven't been lined up out the door like we were in the spring. It's steady, but which is nice.
Good deal.
Commissioner Mays?
Several things I just want to bring up, make sure you're aware of, things we've been talking about in the past for the most part. I have met back just yesterday, a final meeting with a couple of companies dealing with the chiller replacement. We know we're going to have to at some point, and boiler maintenance as well. The original estimates that we talked about for the chiller replacement was in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. But now, after talking with this company, if we're looking at a train chiller, full replacement, it's going to be about less than half of that. We're in the one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, probably, range. Tough part is it's a forty-week lead time on that, so we'll have to get through another summer before we can get that replaced. But they're confident, unless we lose the compressor, they're confident that they can keep it going well enough to get us to another summer cooling system in that period and then replace it by next fall. So just one, you gotta be aware of that. We'll probably look at a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to replace that chiller at some point. But do you think we can get through the season with it?
And remind me, that was what we were having trouble with this summer when it was down a time or two.
Yeah, and it's just.
Now, is that the one that sits?
Outside.
It's not the one on the, it's not the attic or in the, it's on the outside?
No, that's air handle up there. That's just the chiller on the ground outside the courthouse. I'd have a train come in, pick that one up. But that money includes all that removal, everything gone, just for replacement. So what we have is, I think, twenty-two years old now. The semen's put in those years ago, and we've probably had with that really over time. It's just Irish Mechanical has been there multiple times trying to keep it going as it goes along. There's just some internal issues. One was where two different types of metal were welded together. They got a constant leak of the coolant, and that's cost thousands of dollars to replace every year. That just adds, that just needs to go away too. So they're confident they can get that done sometime in the next coming year. So the chiller being replaced, we'll have a new contract with a new service, do the boiler maintenance, and that'll be Boiler Masters out of Indianapolis. I've known them for years, do the Red Cedar Boiler System. They will do a good job. And the chiller maintenance agreement also, maybe about six-thousand dollars a year. That includes them coming twice, at least twice a year, start up and shut down, as well as mid-year, changing the fillers, checking all the valves, making sure everything's in good shape. We have not heard from Irish Mechanical yet, so we haven't decided, of course, if this is who we're going with. But there's some options that we're aware of already. So at least we have some good options to look at. I have met with LTAP through the board meeting, as well as individually. I'm going to meet with Jen Sharkey. She used to be the road superintendent for Boone County. She's now on the LTAP workforce, one of the directors. And about three issues that I want to deal with them. One is, I asked about Amish wheel tax. Why don't they pay wheel tax? I know I have two or three wagons. Sometimes I don't use those wagons all year long. We still gotta pay wheel tax on them every year when I get my license plate for them. So there are several counties in the state that impose a wheel tax on Amish wagons as well. And I just want to look into that and see why we don't, and come back. That's your guys' territory, but just bring the information back to you so we can see if that's what we want to pursue. I don't know why they would be exempted from the same wheel tax that everybody else pays for riding on the road. So we'll find out about that. I got permission from the commissioners at our meeting of the day to go ahead and work up with Jen Sharkey and LTAP our request for proposals from entities for grantee's replacement, probably mid-year. Randy will be retiring, so we want to have someone in place before that occurs. And we're still in discussions with the highway wing, and they're sharing with Marianne County. So I hopefully will have some concrete determination by, if not the end of the year, certainly the very first of the coming year. We need to figure out what the status is. If Mary Ann gets the numbers for us on the art money, we need to know where we are, so we have to have that committed here in the next year. So we have to see what we have and where we have, and then hopefully at a meeting we can discuss what our options might be, and then we'll have an arts committee meeting on that as well. Health insurance, they waited till the end of last month to get the best numbers they could. Still don't know what the numbers will be, but right now Anthem is looking at all their fixed costs in the ten percent range, which really is lower than I expected. With inflation as it is, I expected that to be higher than ten percent, but that's what Nick, Nick, your thanks is going to be coming in at. And of course, that fixed cost is just a relatively small percentage of what the actual cost of insurance is, but claims is the big driver on that. They have taken reinsurance bids out to market, so we probably be able to save some money in that as well. And he fully expects the fixed costs between the reinsurance and the Anthem costs that come in around that five percent mark. I've asked a Mary Ann to come up with a number. Roy may have access to it too, because I know he knew where that was. I just don't know where it is. We have a reserve number, which I don't know where that's located. We just need a comparison between where we were with money in that account last year compared to this year, so we know if we funded enough or didn't fund enough. We thought we were on the edge of being up last year, but we had enough reserve to cover if we didn't. So I just need to see that number at some point. Roy, if you can get that, unless you already have it.
Well, we might be able to come up with it, tend to be in the financial report.
The hope is we're about the same boat we were, so we know that we were funded at the right place. So that reserve hopefully will be in some way. We started off the year claims pretty hard, pretty hard to get.
Self-insurance line, self-insurance fund started at one-hundred-and-six thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents, beginning of the year. It now sits at forty thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars.
Okay.
Was that like forty-one?
Forty thousand, nine seventy-three.
Thank you.
So let's see what we need to do with claims as far as what the increase would be on that. But so that reserve fund means sixty thousand. We just need to see what percentage that sixty thousand dollar bite out of the reserves is compared to the total expenditures for claims. And it's probably not very much of a percentage. I don't know with the numbers. I suppose we're in the million-dollar range on claims. Is that where they claim?
I can't answer that.
Yeah. We need to have those numbers, make that determination, see where we are. Okay. So those numbers should be coming in this next month. Nick will be coming to our next commission meeting and make the presentation on the recommendations on that.
My opinion on that, that's a monthly number. It's not an annual, so I can't tell you exactly what the annual is. Started the month of October at one-hundred-and-six and ended at forty-one, so.
There'd be money going back into that, though.
At some point. Now, when you've received the money over and stuff, I don't know the answers to all that, but we'll have to do a little better investigation, and that's what I'm telling you right now.
Yeah, and I'm not the accountant, so you guys will know far better than I. I wish we could create some lines, we could track monies in, monies out, so we know if we're having them.
It's there, it's just not in front of us.
Okay. All right. That's what we need to know. We looked at doing a, we're going to do a festival shack ordinance. We had difficulty this year. We had one shack that couldn't get out of its sill on the lawn after sixteen days after the festival was gone. And they'd been asked to be out by November first. So I had contact with the Catholic Church by getting it out, and they were embarrassed by the fact that still their, their person who was to move it said he was up there several mornings to take it out, but he couldn't because there were cars in the way. Well, he never notified anybody that cars needed to be out, so we could pull off of the lawn. And so when I talked to the lady at the Catholic Church, she said they had directed him already that it had to be out by midnight that night. And it was gone that afternoon, and we didn't move any cars. So it could have been, could have been taken out at any time. He just never got around to doing it. So we're going to look at a shack ordinance. We don't want to bully people into doing anything, but if you don't have a deadline, you do something by, there's no reason to get in a hurry about doing it. So if we put a line in there that looks by, what we're looking at is the third Wednesday after the festival is over. So festival was over on Sunday. That first week, I wouldn't expect them to be out at all. The tent's not even down yet until Tuesday of that week. But then give them two weeks after that to get everything out. And the reason it's the urgency for that on time is we need to aerate and oversee the launch. So we had that done, but we couldn't do that corner where that shack was. So that corner was not done, but most of it, most of the yard was. We, I sent out to you guys invites for a discussion meeting. I like to say it's, no counties do, and I was surprised by that, but no counties have a joint discussion meeting at the end of the year between their commissioners and councils. I understand we both have our territories that we do, and we're certainly not looking to have any influence on what you guys do. And what we want is you to know what we're looking at as the issues come forward. So if any car is funding, you would have some warning ahead of time, looking at that after that comes up. So originally, I sent out for the thirteenth, thirteenth wouldn't work for a gentleman I wanted to come. We are still in the process. We just did a memorandum, addendum here, oh, a month or so ago, about renewable energies, a moratorium on any actions on those until we decide what we want done. So there's a gentleman who competes, he works all around the state advising counties on what ordinance is they need to have in place, what they need to look for. We had a meeting set up before that he came to have, and I think there were a couple council members there. There were no commissioners there without town, but the others couldn't make it. So we need to redo that again and head on down that road again, as it's getting to be more and more of a consideration. So on that meeting, I've changed the date to December sixth. It'll be here at nine o'clock, December sixth. So we're calling a special commissioner meeting, and then just invite you guys to, as you may be able to come. And then the whole purpose of that special meeting is to discuss the upcoming issues and where we are, what we need to look at. He will present, it will take about twenty, twenty-five minutes for him to present up, his suggestions on what kind of ordinance should be in place, and give us stuff to think about as going forward on the menu. I got another call from another company just yesterday about that. And he wanted to know where he worked. He understood we had a moratorium. We just passed it. No, we have to have one for a couple years now. We did an addendum on it to refresh it a couple months ago. But we expect to have something in place by the end of 2024. And he was glad to hear that. He thinks that's a good, good news. I know we have some folks in the county who want windmills. We have some people who want solar farms. We have some people who don't want anything. We have some who want both. So we're going to have to decide that, just what we're going to do with those things. It is coming. It is going to be an issue. So we're going to have to make some decisions along those lines. And I think that's all I've got, unless you've got some questions for me on these things.
Didn't you have to bid that chiller?
No, we do not, you know, because it's less than four million dollars, so we don't have to bid it out. We'll take other bids. We'll look at other places. But we are really limited on who does that kind of thing, those size of things. And so this company, we looked at, we already talked with Irish Mechanical on who's been doing our maintenance all this time. And they're initially, although it was not a final offer, it was just a ballpark in his mind, was in that three-hundred-thousand range. So they'll come back with a bid, and it would be probably in that three-hundred-thousand range. So we'll have, we'll have multiple bids before we pick one. But that's, that's now what we got.
All right. I'm going to get Chris then, because I know what you want to talk about. So go ahead, Chris. You won't have to say it here.
I just need your approval to apply for a grant for the state, and this is to buy a video recording system for the jail. Their interview room needs a new one. I've worked with Justin and some of the other law enforcement people to get a new video recorder. It's going to cost, the grant is for thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty thousand, four hundred. There's no match. The state would pay for all of it, and we'd buy the system and have it installed.
The current system hasn't been in there very long, has it? Didn't we do that not too long ago?
Ten years, maybe.
Been that long? Feel like we did something in that interview room recently.
It's not working right now either. Finally crashed.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Chris, go ahead.
So I got my annual park report and additional appropriation. It's the diving gear on the initial appropriation. I've had nothing but problems with that since I've been there. Half the US can swim. So by the time they get past the ropes, which is the other thing I don't like about it, they're already tired. So I'm looking to take it out. I had the park board vote on it. They agreed, emergency services, they agreed with us. And the cost would be eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And that'd have to be done in the off-season, so people wouldn't get in the way of it.
No, that's probably a good decision. You have one drilling out there last summer.
Because it's passing, yeah. I've also had fights out there. People shoving kids off, adults shoving kids off that they didn't even know.
These come out.
We just go drop it in place and create a permanent fish habitat right there. So. And then on the annual park report, two of the big projects that we're looking at next year is online reservations and deep Wi-Fi for campground. So fifty years coming up, of course.
Jim, did you guys approve the part over through, Narbs half of that? Yeah?
No, we didn't. He had Mark do that, but that won't be a problem. We did, we talked about taking the diving.
Well, I knew that, but I didn't know if you guys had officially approved the half of the.
Never even thought of that. Remind me to do that. Maybe we can talk to him, and maybe we'll get to take care of it.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
Let him get a report, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Yes, have a good one.
All right. Thank you. All right, Stephanie, you're back to give us another whirl, are you? See, you brought reinforcements this time. Okay, so what do you have for us today?
Well, they have some more information that they would like to share on the conference and some more details about the conference, so I'll pass.
So I just wanted to bring a couple things up. First of all, the original application that Stephanie brought in, and it's all grants, requests are somewhat of a testament on what you're considering going to be. But that included all of the, that was assuming that all the participants were going. So since the last council meeting, no, all the drug court team members were going. Since the last council meeting, Jason has confirmed with each one of the team members whether they are able to go or not able to go. And so we have pared down the overall numbers of people going or planning to go to the drug court conference, I think from.
Originally, the team's comprised of eleven members. Now we're down to seven that said they would be in for the training. The original grant request was twenty-six, five, which covered, the training's in California. So you got to fly, that's housing, meals, the cost to get into the training as well, registration. So when we knock out the four that are certainly not going, that drops it down to basically twenty thousand. Again, we're guesstimating because we don't know how much flights are just yet. The registration's not open yet to the conference either. So we're kind of basing off a few years ago, the last time anybody ever looked into it or went. And I know the cost of everything's going up. So by knocking those numbers down, we at least dropped sixty-five hundred off, off that total amount, down to twenty. I also wanted to, it is called a drug court conference, but actually it's several conferences in one, under one building, one location. So each member of our drug court team has a different tract that they would go to. So like the trainings I go to would be different than the trainings that Jason would go to, or our case managers would go to, or the mentors would go to. There's different tracts for each team member. So I wanted, and I don't think Stephanie was aware of that when she was here last time either. So it's not like we're all going to the same training. It's all in the same building, but it's all different tracks. So those are really the two big items that I wanted to give. So I guess we're asking that you reconsider. And I don't know. I think that we're pretty limited on what can be used or spent out of that opiate account. And I know that the National Drug Court Conference is certainly something that can, that fits within an expense that's allowable for those funds. So we turned it down to twenty thousand, and as I said, each, each team member has a different tract. So I guess we're asking that the grant be approved with a limit of twenty thousand dollars, something like that.
So are you still proposing you're trying to send Hamilton Center people, or are they out?
No, they're two, two, the therapist and the program manager will be going. They're part of the drug court team. They have been for years.
Well, you know, my feeling is that Hamilton Center can send them, is my feeling on that. I don't know that we, you know, they're employed, and Hamilton Center, believe me, this county pours a bunch of money in Hamilton Center that we're forced to. They can pay for them, is my feeling.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I guess the thing is, each one of them would also have different tracks. One is a mentor, and then another one is a therapist. And they're not going to have the funding, I would assume, to spend. They're going to get, you know, a different train, I guess. So I, and again, I'm not sure what else we're going to be able to do with those opiate funds.
Mary Ann, have we even received these funds?
We've received some, but not that much.
Not that much, so.
And the restricted, and this gives some color to how much we're talking about here. In the restricted fund, the balance at the end of October was only sixty-seven thousand dollars. Okay. That's how much money there is to spend. We'll dump twenty thousand of it to go to this. There's another request on here for eight thousand, also going to Hamilton Center. And then there's twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand roughly in the unrestricted.
So which one are you wanting out?
This is all unrestricted, is what she put in.
Restricted, right?
But I believe that we're, over several more years, will be receiving funds to.
I believe, I believe. We deal in concrete numbers, not what may come. I can't, I can't deal in what monies we might get. We don't do that here. So I don't understand you guys why you're in such a hurry. Number one, it's not even open by your own admission. What is the big rush for this? If the conference is in the middle of the summer, what are we in such a, you know, we seem to be in an awful big hurry for this. What is the hurry?
Because conferences in May plan ahead. I mean, housing, transportation, et cetera. But when they open up to the housing, because there's so many attendees, the housing is complete within an hour of the time that they open up the applications. I mean.
When is that open?
I'm not sure, because they haven't given us the date. They've set the date for the conference, but they haven't said, okay, housing will begin such and such a registration yet. I have to continually look at their website. That's how it's always been.
If they have housing, you're getting their housing off of them?
You, that could be an option. They usually use like a Gaylord Resort to house these trainings, because they're against natural. There's a lot of people coming. But the other option would be hotels nearby, or even Airbnb if you'd be, you know, right near the, when we looked at doing the grant, we just kind of guesstimated roughly what a hotel might cost, or an Airbnb. Come up with that figure for housing is what we did.
Is this an annual conference?
Yes, but we only go every other year.
Well, sometimes we miss three or four years, just, you know.
Is this the only place in the country that this is at this time?
Well, that's the, so drug courts are governed by National Drug Court Association. Anyway, it's, this association puts on, it's the association that basically certifies or allows drug courts to operate. So this is the organization that oversees all of drug courts. And so for us to be certified, and we're audited every year, every year, every three years, okay. So we have to go to so much training to be certified as a drug court. And so this meets that training. And so this is the organization that's putting it on, is also the organization that authorizes us to be a drug court, basically.
So the question that I was asking is, is there any other training anywhere else in the country besides this one here? The question revolves around, just as an example, pure example here, is there training in Chicago, or is there training in Minneapolis?
No, this, this organization, every year, they do it in different spots across the country. Next year, it happens to be in California. The year after, I'm not sure. It could be in Washington DC.
Whatever, right. But this is the only place, the only time that this training happens in 2024.
Right. It's a four-day training.
So again, if it's like every year, could you go like half your people go one year, another half the next year? Or is it because of the opiate money that's the grant, is that the, is that the reason you want to send everybody at once?
Well, you would still end up paying out the same amount if everybody goes together one year, or you send half one year.
I understand. It's a little more acceptable. It's only half the amount each year.
Okay. Well, I mean, my understanding was there was sixty-some thousand dollars in this account, and there was limited options to use the funds anyway. So certainly, if this was county general money, it wouldn't even be here asking for it. But it's an awesome program to allow us to be trained and to operate as a drug court. But it's an awesome program to allow us to be trained and to operate as a drug court.
And there's some research.
They won't, the center can't afford to send their own people, so if you want us to send them, basically what you said.
Well, I don't know.
Well, you just told me that they wouldn't have, they would have funding to send theirs. So those two team members.
What I'm saying is, they would get the grant, I would assume they would ask for a grant somewhere else. I mean, I guess we could ask somebody, a Hamilton Center representative to come and speak on there if they have.
Nah, we would, we would just assume it all happened, yeah. So I think, what, so what do you guys think? I mean, I don't have a problem with their own people going. I mean, these funds are for Park County. I mean, but I'm not inclined to send Hamilton Center.
Well, first of all, there, there has to be, and, and, you know, as far as an appropriation goes, there is absolutely no point in appropriating at this point. And the reason is, it's November. That appropriation will expire at the end of December. The training is not until next year. Okay, so let's get that out there at this point. Now, that doesn't stop some decision that can be made about whether or not some go and some don't and so on. But there will be no appropriation. There's no reason to appropriate it because you're not spending the money now. I mean, it's not going to happen until, till next year. So officially, that would be the case with the appropriation. Second thing is, I am not in favor of sending Hamilton Center either. I'm, I, I hear what you're saying about your people and making sure it's certified, the court, the drug court's certified and stuff. And I, I can appreciate that. I would like to have, uh, that we were going to Nashville instead of somewhere in California or something like that. But that is what it is. So from my seat right now, I'm, yeah, I'm not in favor of sending Hamilton Center people. This is not Hamilton Center slush fund as much as they want to seem like they think it is. So if I have something to say about the other appropriation with that, we'll get to that. And, but I, it is for Park County people and I, I will support our drug court being trained and, and being able to, to do their job appropriately. To, for you all to, to carry that program forward. I will support that, but I'm not going to do it for them. They can find their own money.
So are you, are you saying to come back in January?
With a hard number.
Well, there's two things to that, right? It's kind of the question that you were getting asked, when does the conference registration open up?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
I mean, okay, so I know you can't answer that, but is the expectation that it's going to be in December or January?
I'd say no sooner than January, February probably.
Okay, so there is plenty of time then to do this, right? There's no, I've already said, we, there is no reason to appropriate it for '23, none. It will not encumber, it will not vote for an encumbrance on it. So it won't be appropriated '24 and it's around to come back here again. Second, I would agree with you to be a hard number without Hamilton Center.
Yeah, we'll send you guys. I have no problem sending you guys and that's fine, but I'm not, you know, we're not sending Hamilton Center. They have, they have money. They can do it themselves. We're not sending them.
And a hard number, obviously, okay, to the penny, no. There is some, there's not an expectation that you're going to know exactly whatever, what the room costs and all that. But, you know, you get it in the ballpark, right? I mean, for what would be five people or whatever, you can get that number dialed in pretty close. And if it's for five, we'll, we'll go.
I said, are you guys good with that?
Everybody.
Are you? But yeah, we're not sending, not sending Hamilton Center.
So come back and.
Yeah, once it opens up and you know firm request and now you need to re, you need to reevaluate like for five people, obviously.
Do we need to submit a new grant or? I don't know.
Well, they could, you can certainly work with her. You should, it's, it's going to come, if it's going to come from this opioid money, the commissioners have made the decision that she's going to be the one that submitted to them. And so then she can submit a firm number to them. And how you guys have to do it internally before that, we don't really care. But then that'll need to be submitted as an additional appropriation to the county council. And if you want to do it in January, then it's going to have to be submitted to Mary Ann by, oh, sometime mid, early, mid-December. I don't exactly know the date. She can tell you when it is exactly, so it can be in the paper.
We'll submit that, or she, send it, amended application, I guess, at that time. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now Stephanie, you've got the other issue or the other one. I think we're, we still need to talk about the other one too.
Oh, the, um.
Yeah, you don't think that, yeah, it's not a given that you're going to get that one either.
Okay, so the, I, I thought at the last meeting, the letter to request the additional appropriation for the 8,000, that it was agreed that the 8,000, you'd go ahead and do the 8,000.
Well, I think there's still going to be some discussion.
The only agreement that was, was that you could submit it for consideration.
Yeah, yeah, there is no, there was no vote.
And actually, what was said is that the 26,000 would not be coming for consideration until that was pared down. But is what it is at this point. After that meeting, I finally did some research on this whole situation with North Central Park Schools. And what I found for the, for the members is that the Hamilton Center is providing school groups in both the high school and the middle school. At least I stayed, I stayed narrowed into that group at this particular point. What I also learned is, is that it had been, the, the concept had been approached to the superintendent and one of the high school counselors. They had agreed that it would be a good idea. Hamilton Center self suggested that they go to the LCC for opioid money for it, and then submitted the grant to the L2, to that fund, signing the high school counselor's name to it. The high school counselor did not submit or sign that grant. Most of the individuals in, in leader, principals and counselors in that, in both schools are not happy with Hamilton Center's performance. I already knew that, I got that verified. I told, but since the school did agree to the program and something has happened with it, whether it's effective or not, is to be determined. Something is happening with it that I told them I would not put my effort into trying to convince you all to kill it. But Hamilton Center continues to be a thorn there in their performance on many issues. And this is another one of them. I was urged by several of them to kill it, but the school agreed to the program. And so therefore I am not going to pull that rug out from them or try to pull that rug out from under them. But the last, the thing I really want to stress here is, Hamilton Center did this on their own and signed the high school counselor's name to it.
So I think the moral of the story is for you is that, you know, when they shove this stuff to you, I think more effort needs to be put into what really are we getting out of it? Not just here, we want this, submit this grant. I mean, these grants need to be meaningful here and it's not for some organization just to be able to rake in the money. And we need a return for that. And, you know, I don't know if you've talked to the schools, Roy did the legwork here. It sounds like I talked to the school counselors. I think you yourself, if you're going to be the one to have to come and deal with this, you need to talk to the school counselors yourself and do some legwork and not just take at face value what somebody hands you from some organization, no matter whether it's Hamilton Center or anybody else. You're smart, but you need to see what, what we're really receiving is. We really shouldn't have to do this kind of legwork ourselves to delve into all of this. And we would like you to do that. And, you know, obviously, like Roy said, I'm not going to pull the rug out from the schools since they agreed to it. But obviously, there's people there that are not happy with the performance. So in the future, I would encourage you to, you know, check with them. Check with who's actually on the ground doing the legwork and don't just take face value that, oh, this is wonderful.
Sure.
So. And, and you shouldn't have to come in here in that case and take the skewering that you have in the last two months over Hamilton Center, right? I mean, that's not, you're the messenger, right? But you've taken the brunt of it. And, and it's not personal, it's just, that's the way it's happened. Because, but if you've done what he said, then we can say, okay, you've done the legwork, here's the story. You did that, that happened with, with, you guys did that drug bags or whatever it was out of this fund. And we never really batted an eye. You come in, talked about what you're going to do with it. She can talk about what you were going to do with it. It was pretty straightforward, right? I can tell you, that school system is not happy with them. And there's a lot more to it that I'm not going into in this meeting, but.
It might be a good call for you to talk to the school counselors.
Absolutely.
You might pass on to Hamilton Center that they're not on the Christmas card list.
So anyway.
They might make that pretty blunt.
There you go. Okay, so, so, all right. Anything else on that?
Okay, so no on the, are, are we moving?
We're going to, we'll, we'll vote on the, the 8,000 that you asked for. And I, I can't say that, I assume that's going to pass, but I don't know. I don't know if it's passing or not. I can't tell you. We're going to vote here shortly, so.
Oh, okay.
You know, we'll know. I'm quite, not quite there. Maybe not, it'll pass. I don't know. But we'll vote on that one. The, the 26,000 one is off the table until they get their stuff together and, and we find out more definite files. If you want to just hang around, it won't be, hopefully it won't be too long. So, okay, I think, Chester, I think I'm down to you now.
Oh, good, good, good.
Sorry it took so long.
I, I don't know, this is test, because I would like to take a moment and ask Justin on, on the Bridge Festival. There was nobody hit, I know this year, right?
Jason.
Jason, I'm sorry.
Uh, no.
And what about the EMP calls?
What about them?
Was they, was they up or down?
I, you'd have to ask them.
Okay, well, my, my proposal is, I'd like to set, set this scenario up where you guys as a council before four or five people made the decision, it was a good decision now, once I've seen it, to shut this off and shut that off, okay? I want to start at Joe Hawkins, this, where the Big Ten is. That road is 30 foot wide. I, I think what we need to do is put a temporary barrier, which should be moved by the home of the landowners all the way down to Searing Street. That's where it curves. And make that accessible for, there was a lot of people that I personally talked to that were hot. They couldn't go to Mansfield over the hill. And I don't know how many, the police officer at the top of the hill, my mother all stirred around. Well, that, that there, it could be a temporary barrier to keep the people off the road. There, where the roads crossed and it, it's too narrow to have cars go through there. It's a crosswalk and maybe, I don't know how many law enforcement officers we paid for. We don't want to go up no more, but have, have a law enforcement officer right there. You go down to Searing Street, when it, when it repaved the town from, oh, Barnes's property up around the bend, they made the road 11 foot wide. How many 11 foot wide roads do we have in Park County? That road adds a 30 foot rideaway, okay? When you go around that corner, there's going to be another blockade because Merrill's or somebody, it's a, he's a property owner and has opened a new place. I call it myself, I call it the handicap parking lot. Because if you park the far end of that parking lot, people that can't walk very far has access, will have access to the food court. They can walk down the alley and they're right at center of the action. Instead of them having to struggle from Job's far end or struggle from the far end of Bridgeton. That would be dandy to be able to do that. Then on the other end of town, as you're coming into town, I think it would be a great suggestion to put this speed sign thing. Because once they smell the Bridge Festival, they got to pedal to the metal when they make that little loop. At the bottom there, you've got cases on one side, you've got brawers on the other side. And that, that street there, we need to do, go from right there, start a temporary blockade, part of the property's mine. Put a thing and guide people down and put a crosswalk where the two parking lots merge. And the landowners pass out a map. I'll make the map, how you get from point A to point P. You know, I spent about half a day taking people from the roadblock over to Lambert because they were so confused. They were elderly people. And the, the young whippersnappers are not the people that spend money at the Bridge Festival. It's the others. Okay, you get, you get up there where I'm at, that's Webster Street. From Webster Street on is 45 foot. You put a, put a, uh, let's say the right lane, you could get them both going the same direction, put a barricade. Let's, let's say we go in, uh, seven and a half feet, that's probably three people width, all the way up to where the barricades were, okay? You really wouldn't need barricades this year. You could, you could use just crosswalks. You wouldn't have to have somebody make the homeowners there responsible, okay? That allows the sanctuaries, the Browns and the new parking lot dealers to, to be open. And, and as the people come back, make that one lane, they can come back down to Main Street, around to Webster Street. And that's all two lane and it keeps traffic flowing. More people will be satisfied than less, okay? Now, there was two parking lots or three parking lots that were affected. By moving that barrier down like I proposed, would give the Hawkins parking lot access to park. The two ends side of Bridgeton, one of them, she does get, it's Mrs. Shopmar. She has permanent people in there all day. Her and Jerry Lee's wife sit there every morning until nine o'clock. Somebody pull in and they said they was only going to stay a short amount of time, they referred them to another parking lot. They could have parked them and caused all kinds of headaches for everybody. I propose that we have a meeting with all the people in, that's the landowners that have benders, fill those two parking lots up where the people is going to stay all day. And that will take care of all the parking problems in the area. Mr. Brown, he's on the corner of Kaylee and Main Street. They have a little biscuit donut shop there. It's been there probably 50 years in that area. He's, he's even set aside to help his customers a place where they can pull over and get carryout. Because they can't walk from these far distance parking lots. And he's letting people know. Now, that is my scenario of what should happen. The idea, there's no one injured, there is no one hurt, it's great. But also, I think the landowners ought to be responsible to know who's on their lot and what areas, like, and present it to the EMTs. It's like if I have somebody on my lot, well, I own, that, that way, if I would, phone service is terrible. I don't know how we're going to do it yet. Because to get the EMTs as promptly to the scene as possible. And we need a way, and these little notes we're going to pass out, every landowner's responsible, is if the siren goes off, the people know to park the ways. That way, they don't have to fight through the traffic. If they give the people that's coming there a warning, they know. Instead of just assuming they'll move because it's an ambulance or something. Now, I want you to take all this in consideration before you get, move any blockades or something. The bridge has to be blockaded. There's no doubt about that. And, and them people should do something.
Well, the county council's role in all of this is strictly to fund the officers that are on duty there. I mean, we make no decisions regarding barricades, blockades, what road. I mean, we make no decisions regarding barricades, blockades, what road is open and what's closed. Our county commissioners, along with our sheriff, make all of the decisions regarding the closure, opening of roads. Our funding, our role is strictly, how do we pay the people that we had down there? But we, I mean, I, we have no authority to open or close any road, that is strictly our county commissioner. So, you should address, in their meeting, you should address that to the.
Well, I talked a little bit about.
In their meeting, you should.
I noticed in the paper, you had, you wasn't gonna approve nothing until I came to you. I talked to my.
But it's the May, it's the May.
Yeah, it's the entire.
It's not what, it's not the plan, we don't approve the plan, that, yes, they showed us the plan, but we don't approve their plan, we just looked at how much it was gonna cost. If you read closely, that was our, that's our focus here, is May, and we don't delve into that, the commissioners, that is completely their responsibility on roads, is what's going on.
Yeah, okay. And what did you think about my proposal, anyway? Just off the top of your head?
Well, I don't know that I, I, or I don't know if my fellow, if anybody wants to weigh in on that, because I'm not down there, and I'm not all that familiar. I mean, these are the people, especially the sheriff is the one that knows this, and I can't speak for the commissioners, I'm sure they're willing to listen to ideas. Beyond that, I can't really say yea or nay, Chester.
We didn't have, we didn't have, we had a meeting, and everybody was so busy back then, they had a second meeting, and only a select few was in by it, you know? And they did the right thing, don't get me wrong, they did the right thing, because it saved somebody from getting their ass ran over.
Sure.
But I wanna deal with these other things, like the emergency people, the sheriff's department being able to get, hey, you got a drug overdose, and he's got that anti-thing where you shoot in him, and it saves somebody's young's life, that's a miracle. Now, what did you think about my proposal, Jim?
Well, we talked about it, Darby, it's my place to.
Well, I wanted to break it up.
And that's fine.
I misunderstood that.
No, and that's fine, it's completely fine, we appreciate you coming, I just want you to understand why I really not vote for.
You appropriate the money for the roads too, right?
We appropriate the money, but we don't decide, much as I would like to, I don't decide which road gets blacked off, or anything like that.
Well, I got a question, there's Jim Howard, I know JP for years, Jim Howard for years. There's a road paved, it's seventy-five west, Margaret Lee lives on that road. This thing does a horseshoe, that's all it does. They paved it past the, where Margaret Lee lived. Greentown gets probably twenty thousand cars a month. Margaret Lee's gets four a day, maybe. Why didn't we do that? I know the homeowners called in on it, several homeowners. It is paved to where Dale Keys lives, all the way to the Ryegran now. It's a beautiful road, you could run warp speed if you had a warp machine. But I'm saying that the, you appropriate, I think, and I'll bring it up.
They don't decide which road we go, that's our meeting. If you're taking their time, that's our meeting, each and our.
Again, they choose which roads that we go.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
They listen to Randy, and I don't know, I mean, I'm sure the commissioners would be glad to talk to you about that.
Well, I'm gonna ask them about it at their meeting.
Well, ask them at their meeting, that would be a good thing to do.
Well, I misunderstood, you write up in the paper.
Oh, well, that's fine, that's no problem, there's no problem, but I just want you to understand why I really can't answer you, or say whether your plan's good or bad.
I appreciate the time you allowed me to ramble on.
No, that's fine, that's.
But I, I am a transplant in the Park County.
It doesn't matter about that.
I've been there forty-seven years, and everybody said, well, where'd you live before that? I said, well, my dad was a World War Two vet, and my dad was hit across the ride. Our family, at forty-two, he was completely disabled, and they gave him ninety-seven dollars a month to support seven of us, so we moved the lot. And they said, when you move? I said, well, the rent was due, of course.
Well, we appreciate you coming, and it sounds like you do have maybe some good ideas, but address them to the commissioners or to the sheriff, and hopefully they will work with you. And, I mean, this was the first year they did that, from my understanding from the sheriff, it went pretty well, safety is the number one concern down there.
Number one.
Is number one, and we, I work with them, and we'll see, hopefully it'll go well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else as far as the comments? Okay, moving on, minutes for the prior meeting.
Well, thank you to the Madam Assessor for putting these minutes together, she submitted them to me in the last day or two, I've kind of lost track of when it was, I read through them, I felt like they were appropriate.
Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Little sign at the end.
Yeah, try to get them, try to remember to do that. Okay, before you're the additionals, we wanna, we'll kinda go down and go over them, or Mary Ann, you gonna go over them, and then?
You're leaving?
I've gotta be in there.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, well, we.
No questions for me?
I, we'll get, we'll talk, or talk to you later.
December sixth of the, 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 what was our meeting?
Nine AM, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. See you. Okay. Are you doing it, Mary Ann, or whoever wants to do it?
Local Road and Street, hundred and five thousand, Randy come out and talk to me about being short and some funding for, this is for Bituminus, there was some transfers that got done, some, you know, that were across, or in category and stuff, so it didn't matter, but anyway, the recommendation that I gave them was, was to request this out of local Road and Street, because the reserve in that fund is rather healthy, so this is, basically, it's paving match money, or paving money is what it amounts to, so there's hundred and five thousand there. Chris talked about the parking rack one already in his talk. We have been through the opioid restricted ones a few times, bulletproof vest, sheriff is seeking ten thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents out of that fund, that's a grant fund. I don't know where the money came from, I think some of that was.
Mostly grants.
Yeah, it's grants from businesses and so on, right?
Federal grant.
Federal grants.
RMC and community foundations.
Okay. Narcotics incinerator, that's a misnomer grant fund, that's what it was originally for, but that's best for the SROs, so. Misdemeanor, we talked about that one, or sheriff talked about that one, and then Union Hospital Security, we have talked about that subject a number of times, and the auditor can correct me if I'm wrong in what I say here, but that would get that fund appropriated up through, at least now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we got another check that I haven't listened in with this, so, we're still in the red, but I appropriated what we.
Well, the fund can, obviously, the fund cannot be in the red in and of itself, the appropriation would be in the red, because we've never appropriated anything. So, I assume the general entries have all been moved back out of the general fund and into this fund that were done earlier in the year.
Pam was going to work on it, but she never got it done, so I will continue to work on it, so it will all be in the forty-one.
All in that fund.
Are they paying their way in that fund?
I was supposed to get.
If you believe that, if you believe that that money will not end up being pensionable, then I believe the answer to that question is yes.
They, Jim needs talk.
No, I know that.
And I said, I need backup paperwork to tell me that, and I've not got it yet, and I've talked to Nick about it.
What about the liability? I mean, you talked to me about they were gonna give you some kind of like, you know, that they didn't think that we would be liable.
Yeah, our liability covers without it going up in price, but I don't have the backup for it yet.
Because you told me that you were wanting paperwork, I still don't have that.
I still don't have it.
Okay.
I just don't wanna subsidize Union Hospital Security, that's still.
I mean, I, I'm not trying to kill this for those people that are working, but I do not want the taxpayers on the hook for a penny of it, and I certainly don't want any liability issues, and there's, I mean, that's a real gray, we talked, you and I talked about that too, and I know that's been to Nick, it's very gray part of it, I don't think there is any intent for it to be that, that way, but it is what it says, and.
Well, let me ask you this, do we need to catch it up? I mean, this goes way back for.
This will almost catch it up.
This catches up.
Do we have another one in December?
Well, then, I've got, I got a five hundred dollar check in that I haven't quite eviced in yet, or it didn't show up on this report.
But you're gonna be awful close to caught up with this one, and then there's anything else that's gonna be probably either in a normal December or in a year-end meeting together, correct, right?
I'm not in favor of subsidizing Union Hospital, parking, tax, and other things.
Well, we'll sort some of these out, and I, so, see what happens, I guess, that's about as much I can offer, or offer, to see how it goes. Let's see if we can do the non-controversial ones, I'll read them off, and we'll see if everybody's good with this. We'll do the local Road and Street, do the parking rack, the bulletproof vest, the narcotics incinerator, and the padded cell. How about, are you guys willing to vote on that together?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's what you'll be, somebody moving second, we'll vote on that.
I make a motion to consider those five additional, local Road and Street, parking rack, bulletproof vest, narcotics incinerator, misdemeanor.
I'll serve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll go to the opioid ones, and we're just doing, we've taken the, I'm just gonna remove the twenty-six thousand five hundred, so we're not even considering that today. So now you're down to the eight thousand that, for the school, so we'll see how that goes.
I'll say that the school approved it, and I don't wanna leave them hanging out in the breeze, so, for that, for that reason, I'll go along with it, but that's the only reason, and Hamilton Center, you know, Christmas card list.
Okay, so is that your motion?
That's my motion, approve.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion been made, second on the eight thousand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're a no?
I'm a no.
Okay.
Shouldn't you mark me as a no too?
Mark you as a no, two no's then. All right, now we're down to hospital security, so we'll see how this one goes, so, this will just catches up, I'm not pushing to do it, don't do it, I'm just gonna get through, we're gonna get there one way or another, so we'll see if anybody does anything. Well, if you either make a motion or you don't.
Somebody either does or doesn't.
I mean, I don't make motions, so it's not a committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Union Hospital amount. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You're an aye?
I'm a aye.
You're an aye? You're a no?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Aye, okay, six to one. Okay.
And then, next month, we'll expect that.
Okay, I'll go through that. All right, Stephanie, you got everything you needed, you got now, so, all right, thank you, you know, I'm sorry to have to deal with this, but, you know.
No, I appreciate the feedback, you know, this is the first time.
Oh, I understand, and, you know, and I just, I don't wanna, we already took up way too much time, but, you know, and I understand what they were saying about that money is fairly restricted, but we need to make sure that those dollars are used to really benefit here in Park County, and those people that really, I want the people that are really affected by drugs and whatever other issues that that could be for, let's get it, so it helps them, not, you know, some of this stuff is so far away from those people, I mean, that's, that's why we have this, or why it's been, it's just not free money, so let's, let's use it wisely, and try to help the people that need the help. All right, my, off my sub talk, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, initial's are done, transfers, see the attachment.
Anything you wanna comment about the, I have a comment about the last one, but.
You wanna miss, we need to read, probably should read them all for the audience.
All right, so, the first one for CASA, a thousand dollars from office supplies to building rent, I had no supporting documentation about that, but, the next one's for clerk, for the clerk, a thousand dollars from equipment maintenance to postage, that's not really a surprise, considering the cost of postage nowadays. The auditor, five hundred and fifty dollars from office supplies to travel, you talked to me about that one, as far as the conference and so on. The first one for highway here is from welding supplies to operating supplies, the amount of three hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, it's in eleven seventy-six, main NPH fund. EMS has three hundred and four dollars and twelve cents from software and equipment maintenance to travel, a thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents from software and equipment maintenance to medical supplies, and two hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents from postage to medical supplies. The last one, I am, I can't just single-handedly strike this one from the list, but this will be handled with a resolution, so I would ask that we not approve this. This is a transfer from eleven seventy-six, gas, oil, and lube, that'd be in the main, or in the general and undistributed department, two oh-three department, to eleven seventy-three, the maintenance and repairs department for Bituminus, this is overrun from having two grant cycles in the same year, so we, we were a late approver, a late approval for twenty-two on community crossings, and then got a big chunk of the front end on twenty-three dash one, so, almost, you know, the better part, for instance, the easy way to say this, it's two years worth of jobs got done in one, so they're moving money. Now, the problem with that one is, is that is, not only, it's a, and you can make an argument that you can move from eleven seventy-three to eleven seventy-six, because the board of accounts has said that's a sub-fund of eleven seventy-six, and it all has to do with the legislature wanting certain percentages of money being used for certain things, but it is across department, and you can't just do that. We have a resolution to deal with another one of those here in a minute, so, I wrote, added that to the resolution yesterday, so we will need to not approve this last one as it is written, or that one as.
The highway, the highway.
The highway one from eleven seventy-three to eleven, or eleven seventy-six, eleven seventy-three. We have four here for the extension service, ninety dollars from equipment maintenance to dues, a thousand dollars from equipment maintenance to travel, five hundred and thirty dollars from equipment maintenance to office supplies, and fourteen hundred and two dollars from postage to office supplies. That's the transfer, that's just.
Questions?
So, we're removing the one that, Roy, because we will deal with that in our resolution, but the others are for your consideration.
Approve.
Second.
Most been made, second to approve the transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the jury.
I think most pay the jury.
Second.
Most been made, second to pay the jury, all in favor?
Aye.
The auditor has submitted the cash flow statement that's in your packets, monthly reports, no redevelopment, no courthouse security.
The commission did have two things before last month, one's a bakery in Lyford, that they have a loan from.
Yeah, they're pending approval for that.
Pending approval, and they got that last month, so they're off and running, but you did a real nice job of presentation.
Did a nice presentation for us.
There's a gun, basically, ammunition manufacturing and gun retail sales approved, it's the old Doc Breton office, you know where that is, it's just outside of Los Zimas, they're on a one point three acre plot, I think something like that. Anyway, it's, has quite a few restrictions on it, but it was approved for retail ammunition sales, absolutely no shooting to occur on the property. And then I've got one correction from last month, I said the church camp did not get approval for the church camp down at Rocky Fork, I was, when I left the meeting, my understanding was they were going to disallow it, and after they talked to the attorney, he said, it's private property, they can do basically what they want anyway, so if you approve it for zoning and put some restrictions, you can have some control, if you don't, you have none, so they did approve it for it to occur, for it to. So they did approve it for a church, for a church camp. So it is zoned for church camp now. That was my mistake.
Okay, West, solid waste?
Yeah, let me just give you the the report. It's kind of, uh, this is the, uh, twenty twenty-three recap, but it also has the figures for twenty-one and twenty-two. So you can see how much, uh, recycling takes place in in Park County and, uh, you know, and also the talks away and so forth. So just some, you know, good information to see how how valuable actually it is as far as the county's contribution to it.
I had a big day at Talks Away this year.
Yep.
Big day, five hundred and fifty vehicles went through that. It's a bunch. Ninety-four, almost ninety-five thousand pounds of recycled.
That's in Putnam County, you're talking.
No, I'm sure, yes, I am reading Putnam.
Yeah.
Two hundred and eighty-four here, fifty-eight thousand five seventy-two.
Still a lot.
It's a lot.
Tires are a big one, aren't they? We might get rid of the tires. Yeah, not all of us can burn them.
There's still almost a hundred, between the two, it's a hundred vehicles.
There's a nice.
Eight hundred and thirty-four vehicles between the two. Two of them, a hundred more than last year. It's good.
Good, good rule.
Good deal, thank you. Uh, okay, moving on to the resolution that you somewhat already talked about, but it's still already in.
I don't really exactly all the details, but details entirely with the coroner and her autopsies, but there's been an issue with a number of, having a number of autopsies here recently. And she has overshot her appropriation to the tune of four thousand dollars at this point. Um, so that was ran past me, what we're going to do about it. So I I just said we'll find a place to move some money. Um, so we, I proposed to move it out of our special projects line to the coroner's.
Our special project was autopsies.
Our special project here was autopsy.
Don't, don't mess with it.
That, that and SOD.
Um, well, both are needed and that is under the circumstances.
That's what it is, right? So I would propose that as a, that's a cross-department, uh, transfer. Uh, and then the second one is the one we just talked about for the highway, moving from eleven seventy-six, the gas, oil and lube, to eleven seventy-six bituminous. There's nothing to stop it from staying in the same zone and using the bituminous line that exists. So we will just do that. And the auditor will do an AP correction and correct that bill. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. I would move those to be approved.
Second. Motion made, been made in second to approve a resolution, twenty twenty-three dash nine, reduction of appropriations, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, anything else?